12:07 PM, motion to open the meeting.
So motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to, I know you were here last meeting, but I didn't recognize you, I'd like to say welcome, Chris Goodman.
Thank you.
I think you'll be an asset to the board.
Thank you, appreciate that, glad to be here.
So first up tonight, we're gonna talk about 183 Main Street, continued discussion of carriers not following their decision or the local bylaws. Are you gonna be our representative?
Yes, my name is Jill Schaefer from Prince Lobel, I represent T-Mobile, and we are continuing, I don't have my expert project manager with me tonight, so hopefully you received the documentation that he provided me, a draft response plan if there were a spill, information on the spill box, which is the containment system, that is always put on this type of generator, we sent some sound specs just in case, as opposed to sound, and then you had the specs on the generator from last time, but I have extra.
The only, you know, Wally and I were both in on the meetings prior, and A, it's a prohibited use, any fuels in the Aquafor district?
So, we went through that last, Joseph, who was with me last time, we went through the diesel generator in the Aquafor Protection District requirements, we established that it met all of these issues. Do we have?
Do you represent, you said, T-Mobile?
Yes.
So you're the owner of the tower?
No, no, just the generator, and we're a tenant on the tower.
Yeah, so a company called SBA leases the land from us, and T-Mobile leases space on the pole from SBA.
And then AT&amp;T's in on, is the secondary?
There, I believe they're on the tower also, yes.
Okay, on that. So, so the initial SBA, do we have a copy of that original decision or the date?
It's in there.
It's in the package.
Okay, so that date for the SBA decision goes back over a decade?
Oh, you mean the special permit to allow for the tower itself?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think we have that, no.
So, on that, because I was here for that.
Yeah, that's a site plan approval.
Right, and then the site plan review, approval for that particular tower going in, the concerns at the time, back then, were the same that they are today, that that has to be natural gas. So, who decided to put a diesel generator in violating that, for one, and then two, who wasn't paying attention on the approval, or even asked the question about the natural gas? So, because that's part of that tower.
Right, so, it was an absolute oversight. Now, a different law firm did represent T-Mobile when the site plan approval was granted with the conditions.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure if it got lost in translation after that attorney was no longer represented, but when the construction plans were built in 2020, were designed in 2020, it was an oversight, and I would say it would be SBA's oversight. T-Mobile also, when they did go visit the site before construction plans, saw that the AT&amp;T generator was there.
Yeah.
And nobody read the site plan approval or something, nobody told them not, it wasn't supposed to be there, they saw the AT&amp;T generator, plans went forward, and then when it was time to pull the proper permits in 2021, your, I think your fire chief, or maybe it was your electrical department.
Building inspector, probably.
Building inspector, noticed that the, first of all, the site plan approval wasn't recorded, and also that it did have the conditions where it should have been natural gas or propane.
So.
No, I think we didn't even, we didn't even allow propane, I thought it was just natural gas.
Natural gas.
Oh, it says or propane.
Did it say propane?
Yeah, I think it says or propane.
It's typical.
We don't, okay.
Yeah.
Says natu, will use natural gas.
But either way, so.
And then the next one is, will not store any hazardous materials on site, so.
So, my apologies if I missed a previous, a previous meeting on this one, but it's pretty simple. Get the generator out, or do the conversion over to natural gas, and what's the issue?
Because what we'd like to do is request an amendment to this site plan approval.
Was one member, no?
Especially because.
Absolutely not, because the initial tower that went up was supposed to be, was always on natural gas, because of the river, and the wells in the vicinity, and if someone missed it on an oversight, and it's just a generator, so do the conversion.
But it's a backup generator, and it's a public safety issue, so.
Yeah, oh, you can put the generator in, just convert it to natural gas, like it's supposed to be. So what's the issue?
So, the other, the other issue, and I happen to own a fuel company, filling near a navigational waterway, which is in the Merrimack River.
Yeah.
You have to have Coast Guard approval. So, whatever company goes out there to fill the generator.
How does AT&amp;T fill their generator?
I did probably have Diesel Direct or somebody else, or a, you know, you know, so that's a navigational waterway, I know that for a fact, and, you know, the containment, you can go with the other issues of who's running the truck, something happens to the truck, the guy's not paying attention, what good is the containment then? I mean, all these, all this was all laid out as a protection of the environment in the Merrimack River.
Right, well, you're, in 2018, your, I guess he was the super of the Water and Sewer Department at the time.
John Cusick.
Yeah, so when he made his recommendations, he says, if, what type of fuel generator will be used? If diesel fuel is to be used, they must provide proper containment and possibly an alarm system to monitor any spill situation. So it was at least considered then. I would say that this state-of-the-art diesel generator, which I'd say has bells, whistles, and all those other type of things, in addition to the alarm system, and the proper containment, is actually more safe.
All right, so, so just, for a second, just entertaining that we leave the diesel generator there, looking at your spill response plan, is this the actual spill response plan?
This was a draft created just for the town of Groveland, so it's very.
Because I was gonna say, being familiar with dangerous goods response plans, this is very, very, very bare bones, we'll call it.
Fake.
Right, and this was left open for interpretation and edits, additions, specifically for the town of Groveland, and what they would want in a spill response plan, and so, the, yes.
So, so T-Mobile doesn't, doesn't have a standard?
They don't, no, but it depends on the site and the location and the circumstances, and yes, they tailor them to the site specifically.
I don't even see Chemtrick.
No, no, I mean, I'm assuming this, Kira would notify, would notify that, or I don't know if they're expecting the Groveland FD to notify Chemtrick or somewhere like that?
I think that's what Kira Emergency Services is, is like that.
I think the containment issue is still there, though, because there, other than the tank, other than the tank itself, there's no containment.
Right.
So, if the tank is compromised, there's no way a responder can stop it from going onto the pad, onto the ground.
Yeah, no, absolutely, but even that, you know, what they're talking about here, the responder, they say, hey, he lives 20 minutes away, but he has a Rhode Island phone number, and the question is, he lives 20 minutes away, what if he's not home? Right? So what's that timeframe look like, if he's not home? Who's the, who's the business hours on duty person?
Well, and how many gallons have leaked in 20 minutes?
Right.
And then.
And then it just says.
Seventy-five gallons.
You know, if Derek notifies the other five bullet points, and then the next point is that Kira provides updates. Okay, what's the timing between notification and update, and how long, how long till someone's on site actively doing containment?
Right, right.
Right? So, I mean, honestly, I would, I wouldn't even consider this to be a draft, this is, there's about 16 holes on this, just looking at first glance.
So, well, you guys missed the boat, I don't see the problem of push-pull of a generator, if you can use it. I don't see the problem of push, pushing that gemmer, you know, putting a new generator in place and taking that somewhere else where you can use it.
Right, I guess it's obviously the cost, and I don't know if there is natural gas there, I think.
There is.
Colin, can you speak to where the natural gas is there a bit more for the?
Yeah, so we have a natural gas generator at the well, just past us. I believe it comes down through the woods, through, from the parking lot bases behind Town Hall here. There's a line that runs down to feed our generator.
Are there plans that would show that, that we could?
Potentially.
Access?
I know, we've had it dig safe before.
Yeah.
So I think, I think all the utilities kinda go down through a little path, where there's no trees.
Yeah, it was put in decades ago, it's like, so, that's what surprised me about this, it just appears that, and no offense to you, coming through, but somebody didn't read this, somebody goofed, thrown in a diesel generator, and now you're trying to backfill it, and say, oh, well, we already bought it, well.
Well, no, I think what we're saying is that it is safe.
No, no, you didn't read the decision, and no one asked, and you put a diesel generator in, and now you're trying to get us to accept it, because it's an expense item, I'm sorry, that doesn't fly. We went through this over decades ago.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Well, you should have asked before, and not you, but.
Of course we should have, T-Mobile should have seen this from when they were doing their construction plans back in 2020.
Right, in 2018, but your decision was even after that, so.
The decision was 2019.
Nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, so it came, even came after the 2018 comments, so.
Yes, it was 2018 comments, 2019 decision.
I mean, we were on this original site when we put up that monopole, what was going out there, because of the Merrimack River, because of the wells and everything else, this was all out with the special permit, and somebody should have known about it, and it just looks like, to me, it looks like, well, we just dropped the generator in, so we wanna use it, so we're gonna file a mod and try to sneak it in, and I've seen this before, and I installed these generators, it is no big deal to haul that sucker out, and then put in a propane conversion, or even sometimes, it's a dual fuel anyway, and I'm not sure of the combustion system on that one. So you can just change it out?
So propane would be acceptable?
Propane and natural gas would be the oil.
I know, it's in the decision.
And natural gas, natural gas, yeah, and they're both the same, as far as how the generator works, and most generators, particularly.
Right, but propane would be cheaper than tying into the gas line?
Correct.
So.
Unless it's already out there, which, you know, I forget who put that in grid, or put that gas line in, years ago.
The question for the chief would be, when you install a propane tank, is it a berry tank, or is it gonna be above ground, and then you're gonna need probably Jersey berries around it?
Has to be permitted through.
Correct, but you're gonna probably want Jersey berries around it if it's above ground.
Right.
And it on a.
All the safety issues have to be followed.
And on a cement pad.
Right.
And this is the.
Which I believe is a cement pad.
A Generac printout?
It's a cement pad.
This just comes with all the generators, you print them out.
Yeah, it's like a spec sheet.
I mean, the gas line doesn't require.
I think I've got about 20 of these somewhere.
Natural gas lines never gonna care, you know, you're never gonna need a refill, you're not gonna have a shortage, you know.
And that was, that was the issue.
You know, sometimes you get some shortages with the propane.
Back in, too, to go, to go with natural gas, because of a blizzard or something else, we need, you need the cell towers to be up and operational for emergencies.
Right, that's the public safety issue, is to make sure that they have a backup.
And yeah, so that's, that's why the gas was another consideration and the plus at the time when we approved that thing, I'm gonna say it was almost 20 years ago, so, when it went through. So there was a reason for it.
Okay, so I know that T-Mobile had reached out to the fire chief about getting a fuel storage permit, so we'll just.
He's right behind you.
So we'll just cancel that?
Okay, because I haven't seen it yet, but the fire prevention officer may have seen it before me.
Yeah.
A lot of times the permits go straight to the fire prevention officer, then he contacts me and lets me know what he's working on.
Got it. Yeah, so I'll just let them know, that's not.
Did you actually submit an application for this, for the mod, or you just?
Nope, we just wanted to talk about it, see what you guys.
So you don't have anything before us on that, so?
No, we're just, we're just talking, but.
There was a lot of discussion on it with the other.
Don't think I'll file one now.
Yeah.
Well, there was a lot of discussion with prior, you know, legal team that was, it was like two or three meetings on this.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, because I saw emails that he submitted alternate plans, and he seemed to have, like, appeased you guys, and that was the decision that came out.
Yeah, he did a good job, and then for them to drop the ball and throw a diesel generator in is kind of a bummer.
And then not to file anything, you know, you know how that goes, so.
Yeah.
That's on that, so, okay.
Okay.
So I don't think we need to vote on this, because there's really nothing before us.
I will let T-Mobile know.
And what would be the timeframe that you would pull the generator and put the?
I, I will have to get back to you, I'm not sure what they're.
Are you the POC now?
What is that?
Point of contact.
I was thinking like something, generator.
So we can have Annie probably just reach out to you?
Yes, I am definitely the person, so I will let her know when T-Mobile will be out.
And the plan is, just so we're all on the same page, to transition this to a propane generator?
Or a natural gas.
Or natural gas, okay.
I would probably prefer to see natural gas, because we may be running into propane shortages this winter.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Okay.
The only thing I would say about that is, and again, no one's problem in this room, but if the line that feeds my generator might not be big enough to feed both.
Yeah, so that's a grid issue to.
Yeah, so that would be.
Public, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The engineer would have to reach out to National Grid to confirm how big the pipe is, and if it can support two generators.
Two generators.
Got it.
Yeah, I presume that would be standard spec, as they go through the install process anyway, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, then.
We're sorry that you.
Well, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Likewise.
Thank you for visiting Groveland.
And just one thing for the board, and so you know as well, I have been trying so hard to reach out to AT&amp;T, because they also have a diesel generator down there, I have reached out to SBA, the company who owns the pole, I have multiple different avenues, I've reached out to AT&amp;T, multiple different contacts, I have gotten Rebecca, our town administrator, involved, and we are now looking at our SBA lease to see if there's anything we can poke at from that direction, so.
Do you have a, do they ever get back to you?
Sorry?
Have they gotten back to you?
Oh, no, that's the issue.
Do you have a point of contact that maybe you can share with a town planner?
I could check.
To make our pathway a little bit easier?
I mean, the carriers compete, but they also talk, so maybe.
Yeah, I, I've been.
Would be appreciated.
Yeah, I've been trying, I've like reached out to, I don't know how many people, how many different times, but like the email that was on the original AT&amp;T application, one of them doesn't work anymore, one of them just never responded to me, so, I'm trying.
Which, I mean, I think raises the question, what happens if AT&amp;T's tank had an issue?
Has a problem, what are you gonna get?
We can't even get an answer.
I'll feel responsible.
But we can't even get an answer from them, just.
I know, well, so that's why Rebecca and I are gonna be looking at the SBA lease.
Yeah.
That we, like, that the town has with SBA, and see if we can just get them to.
Where do the checks come from?
SBA.
Okay, so there's gotta be an address on there.
Yes.
It's just an automatic generated check, probably.
Yeah, but there's gotta be something that goes with it, and then.
Yeah, so Rebecca and I are gonna look at that lease.
Send them a warning shot across the bow.
Yeah, so that's what we're gonna try to do.
I think we just did.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice night.
All right, what else we got?
We got roadway length, continued discussion for clarification of roadway length requirements for subdivisions.
So, we began this conversation at our last meeting, it stemmed from the Wetlands Awesome Group that you might be familiar with from 106 King Street, the subdivision there, I guess when that was approved, the board had said that they were going to look into our roadway length requirements for subdivisions, because it says 750 feet, but it doesn't specify how we measure that 750 feet, and I guess it's been measured differently, depending on the subdivision, so, for example, from where the road starts, to where the cul-de-sac begins, to the middle of the cul-de-sac, to the end of the cul-de-sac, measuring around the cul-de-sac, we, there, we do not have any clarification in our bylaw as to how that should be measured, and obviously that can really vary the length of the actual road, and so they kindly reminded me that that is something we said we would look into, so, again, just bringing it in front of the board to iron that out.
I would say start to finish, I would say from point A, the start of the road, to the end of the cul-de-sac, not necessarily going around it, you know what I mean?
But I will say a couple things before you continue, I've reached out to different department heads, Colin with the Water and Sewer, Chief Valentine with the Fire Department, and I've also reached out to Rennie, who's not here, I've asked their opinions, because it matters to them, you know, moving forward. Rennie, he personally wants it to measure around the cul-de-sac, because that gives him more feet of roadway, which gives him more money through Chapter 90, I've looked at other towns' bylaws, and other towns' bylaws include the cul-de-sac, because that road measured gives frontage, therefore, to the houses that are on the cul-de-sac, so it makes sense to measure that as part of the roadway, because it gives frontage, but again, every town has done it differently, I sent, after the last meeting, I found every single town in Massachusetts roadway length bylaw, someone else put that information together, but it's all so varied and different.
Everybody varies, so what was the, do you remember what the length of that cul-de-sac is, from start to finish?
106 King, I believe they were granted a waiver for, I think, 860 feet.
Okay, so the, when that was designed, and that was, that was on my watch, and why we did it, the 750 feet, was because we had a lot of roads that went in, and they connected, and they connected, and they connected, and there was no way out.
Do you mean Rocky Woods?
Well, Rocky wasn't the only one, but it was Rocky One, Rocky Two, Rocky Three, and they just kept going on, and next thing you know, you get a mile of roadway, and there's no way out of there, which is what the power lines actually were, were gonna be used by the former chief, being able to get in there, come on down those, if we ever had to get in, because that was our fear, you had, a tree drops across Evergreen, how are you gonna get in there?
Nobody has a chance on?
So, so a couple of things came into play, in the old master plan, and what we were looking at was, what's the optimum size subdivision in the town of Groveland, okay? And that was one of the studies that we did, which we spent a lot of money in, too, on the initial master plan, when that went out, and through all the different designs, matter of fact, there might even be some of the old ones in there, and still in the, in the planning board office, we actually did them for 750 feet, 900 feet, and how many houses? Six, seven, eight, nine, 10, okay, and the optimum road length that came out of that was 750 feet, okay, and it's from the beginning of the road, straight line, to the end, that's it, 750 feet, that's what it was, that was designed, there was no around, there was no maybe, there was no, let's included this, it was just a straight line shot, straight down, 750 feet of length of road.
Might down the middle.
Right down the middle.
But now you factor in the turn radius for fire, you're gonna need some kind of a turnout.
Right, and that was one of the other things that we looked at, because some of these were approved, like Valley Farm Road, okay, so they had hammerheads in them, they didn't have cul-de-sacs, and then we got away with that, because they were having trouble turning the trucks around, okay, and then we had these little Ts that were going in, okay, these little angles, okay, so, those were eliminated, and went into a full cul-de-sac design, 750 feet of road length, from point A to point B, and now the people that have the question with that, it's not this board, and it hasn't been history of other departments here, it's been the developers, because they wanna squeeze another house or two in there.
So how do you treat, how do you treat like Cherry Tree Lane that goes down and has a big oval at the end, because you could, you could have a 750-foot road into a giant.
Right, and some of those, like Pheasant Lane, for instance.
Right, but that's not, that's not being measured.
So Pheasant Lane.
Correct.
Goes down, but Pheasant Lane doesn't have a center turnaround cul-de-sac, okay, and Pheasant Lane was an experiment, because it also had, in the roadway, the sidewalk. It was actually, in Pheasant Lane, there's a five-foot wide on the right-hand side, that's the sidewalk, it was one of the things that we were experimenting with, because people were saying, well, we don't have a sidewalk plow, we can't plow the sidewalk, so we experimented by putting an extra five feet of width in that roadway, and there was a line that was painted all the way down, and there was, you know, stencils for strollers and bicycles and that sort of thing, well, then, that wasn't passed on, so people were parking cars technically on the sidewalk, and there was no way to enforce that, and then also, at the end of that, was a very large, open area, okay, that we experimented with, because the residents at the time down there, when it came to completion, didn't want a planted cul-de-sac, believe it or not, and we've since, in a way with that, because it didn't work, and now you got this just giant paved area down there, and it's great for a street party, I suppose, but.
Yeah, it's good for parking, too, people off-street parking, so that would be the problem, that if they have to go down there with fire apparatus, they can't turn around, because of the T, you know.
So that's why the cul-de-sac, why you have a cul-de-sac design inside, right now, in the subdivision wreck, so it is 750 feet from the start, straight line all the way to the end, always has been, okay, and that, and that was probably a year and a half study that we actually put into that.
And that has a cul-de-sac, but that's not part of the measurement, the 750 is to the edge.
Where's the end?
The end is on the opposite side of the cul-de-sac. You got it, straight line right through.
The back of the curve.
Yep.
So it's not the circle of the cul-de-sac measurement, it's the straight line.
Pretty straightforward.
But the road commissioner wants us to include.
Well, he wants more roadway.
He wants more money.
He can calculate the roadway, but the road length is different than how much actual pavement's out there, if you wanna add up the actual pavement going into a circle.
The way he explained it to me was, if the cul-de-sac has a, like, landscape circle in the center, then they count the outside, but if there's no landscape circle, it's just straight to the end.
Well, all of them have landscape circles now.
Most of them are drainage.
Most of them do, yeah, but just.
Yeah, we did away with the, the open area, and I agree with that, his theory, he's probably talking about Pheasant as well, because it's a big area.
Yeah, and Sunset Circle, too.
Well, your cul-de-sac is a planted area.
And then another thing to consider.
I'd aim to plant that, yeah.
Good job.
Another thing to consider, we've had, I've had a couple people reach out about cul-de-sacs and who's maintaining certain ones, it's the one on Cherry Tree Lane, and something I was talking to Rennie about, another thing, if we're looking at a roadway bylaw and we're planning on changing it, making it so that there are minimum design requirements for the interior of the cul-de-sacs, so that they're low maintenance, so it's nothing crazy that, if the highway department is gonna end up having to take care of it, if the HOA refuses to take, take care of it, and the, it's on the town.
Most of them, they don't have an HOA, but the problem is when they design the drainage, and they put that loomy sandy basin for, you know, for actual drainage, it grows like wildfire, so.
But if the highway department can just take their cutter and just chop it down, that's one thing, if it's like a nice landscape thing with flowering bushes.
Just send Wally out there, he'll take care of it.
Doing one for a while, but there is a design in the, in the subdivision control law for what the cul-de-sac looks like.
But it's just that this, this Wetland Awesome Group said that we have been very inconsistent.
That's because each subdivision that comes in, it's, there's a landscape design that goes with it in each.
No, they're talking.
We're talking road length, so.
Oh, the roadway length, I'm sorry.
Because it was extended for 106, and the way it was measured for each has been different.
Was there any guidance in MGL at all?
No, there's nothing in MGL.
No, she benchmarked other towns, like no consistency.
We purposely did this, because we had all these roads going in, and the other problem is, is that once you start going beyond that, and then we also, I mean, there was just a bigger, there was a bigger study of this than there just was, you know, how long's the road gonna be? Okay, we did take into account, you know, fire apparatus, also fire hydrants, because at the time, we didn't have that much water going around through the town as well, we also looked at town budgets, at what's the break-even point, when you throw so many houses on a single subdivision, compared to the tax revenue input, where's the break point? Do you have 50 houses on one straightaway? Okay, and what type of design is that? And, and so there were many, many factors that came into play, also what came into play was 303.5, okay, the circle with it that doesn't include the setbacks, and we designed all these.
So, what happens if somebody can horse you in and out? The 750, you can go 1500 that way.
You got it, as long as you can get a way out, and that was our, our main concern, was public safety, tree drops, you can't get in.
Yeah, but how long's the tree gonna sit there?
Well, long enough to not be able to get.
We have a storm tonight, we have 15 trees down, how can the highway department get out there and start cutting them down?
We got our own chainsaws.
Well, that, whatever, if the fire department needs to get out there when the tree's down, tree's down, how many accesses and...
Yeah.
That's not to say that a tree goes down in the front of a 750-foot road.
Well, right.
You can't access the road. I mean, what's the difference? In most of, I would say, most of Evergreen and Rocky Woods, we do not have giant trees, you know, all the way down the street. They're just street trees.
Yeah.
I think regardless, regardless, we've said 750 feet. How do we measure it?
Without having a second way out.
Okay, I hear what...
I had the conversation not too long ago about Alyssa Drive and Diane Circle on the second way out. You have to have a second way out of that, because there's so much road.
That's why Stonebridge just got that emergency road in.
Right. It's got that emergency road. It's got that second exit in means of eager.
Is it still there?
I think the gate's locked. It was when we were putting up houses in there.
Yeah, yeah. It was locked when it was up, yeah.
But I will caution the board, if we adamantly say 700 feet, 750-foot road length, like 106 Kin Street did, was they gave us a 12-inch main, three hydrants. You know, if you're going to come in and seek waivers, then there's going to be improvements that benefit the town. You know, I don't see the problem without an additional 100, 150 feet. Do you know...
The waivers, the waivers do have to benefit the town.
Well, this one did.
And on 106, there were other things that, like the quirky lots, cutting styles, and some of the other things that were in there, because of the circle and because of the side lot lines, okay, that were coming in with 303.5 and the circle, and that was misinterpreted in that particular subdivision. There's two extra houses in there that shouldn't be there on a original subdivision design.
We allowed one extra lot, yeah. You're still going 15 years ago from that, you know, from that subdivision plan, but you can't do that, because it was a different engineer.
No, no, no. I'm just saying in general. But in there, when they did the side setbacks, okay, 303.5 put that circle in, okay, so that the circle, the contiguous big area circle, had to be contained outside the setbacks, okay? And there was a reason for that. And well, that was wiped out on 106. So, you ended up with quirky lot lines on a couple of them. I think the ones on the back. But in any event, the benefits for the waiver have to go to the town.
I agree. I agree.
Okay?
You're not going to come in and say, "I need 30 homes on 2,000 feet."
Yeah, you waive a sidewalk on one side. What's the benefit to the town for that? And sometimes, we pitch to the developer, "How much are you saving by only putting the sidewalk on one side?"
But adding that extra lot gave them the ability to put the 12-inch main, and I think it was upgraded from a 6-inch main. Am I right?
Yeah, I kind of disagree with that theory, but it's nice that the pipe was updated, so, and that was approved, so I'm not going to get into that.
It's a benefit for the chief and...
I think we still just have to...
That's part of the waiver process, right?
Correct, correct. So, I would caution the board and say, "And adamant, 750 feet." You've said it. I've said it.
Yeah, but nobody's, we're not debating whether waivers are allowed or not. We just, 750 feet is the limit. How do we measure it?
So, in the subdivision bylaw, does it state down the middle, front to back?
It did initially, and then we've had a few revisions.
It doesn't say where, yeah.
Where the measurement is. So, we should add a clarification that the measurement starts the beginning of the road and ends, basically a diagram would work really well.
A diagram would probably be nice, yeah.
That'd be easy to do.
And also noting, I know, like, an issue with water and sewer they have is that they don't want it to be too long, because you don't want a dead-end water service.
Well, we always loop the service.
By ignoring the length of the circle, the only thing it does is it leaves a little, seems to me like it leaves a loophole, where you could have 750 feet in and then have a 300-foot circle.
You got it.
And then you end up with two more houses that weren't supposed to be...
It would be up to the board to actually...
Not if we, not if we say our measurement is from here to here. Someone could put as big a circle as they want down there and say it's 750 feet.
But the water service is looped. It goes in and out when it goes down.
That's a question for Colin.
Right. Is that one, is that looped, in and out?
Which one?
106?
No.
I didn't think so. I thought that ended.
The commissioner's waiver requested. Did you guys waive it? And you did.
We did, yeah.
Is it going to blow up? It doesn't have an additional 20, 30 feet to blow up?
Oh, it does have a blow-off?
Yeah.
No, the hydrant at the end.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does it blow off?
So, are we able to specify the measurement and also specify as a kind of addendum to that, min-max diameters for the roundabout at the end?
Yes.
Well, that's already in.
That is. I don't know if they're up to date with what the fire chief would like to see, though.
Fire chief says the minimum radius, so the biggest fire truck in town can turn around in one shot.
Yeah, and that was the 125-foot radius, I thought.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Will there be any more fire trucks with, along the line?
I go by more fire trucks. They're going to be short-wheel based, not long. I like short-wheel base. Makes it easier for guys that don't know how to drive trucks to drive them.
Right, but again...
I don't have 15 Colin Stokes and Dan Briscoes that can drive these trucks like this, no tomorrow. I have three or four. That's it.
So, if we have, so if the bylaw says that it's 750 feet, measured front to back down the middle, with a specification of how long the roundabout at the end used to be...
Well, that's already in, so...
That solves the problem, right?
Yeah, so all we need is a diagram to...
A diagram, and then maybe, I don't know if this is something we would want to do, but talking about adding in that landscape portion, making it low maintenance for future...
Yeah, but it is. If you look at the...
We always try to make them low maintenance anyways.
In the subdivision...
Yeah.
Rules and regs on the design, okay, and each subdivision comes in with its own landscape architect for that particular cul-de-sac, okay? So, that's easy to enforce, and we can add that to the language on that section, but the actual diagram of what that cul-de-sac looks like is in there.
I think it's also because of the Wetland Awesome Group, they were upset about the waiver. It's really just that waivers are being granted for these things, and our bylaws are saying one thing. So, I think it might be kind of almost a larger...
I held...
That waiver was granted, gave them a 12-inch main.
Yeah, I mean, once they start taking showers with that, they'll be happy.
Waivers are allowed, but...
For the record, I held firm on 750, because I wrote that reg, so I know exactly why we put it in. But anyway.
Well, it sounds like there is, though.
I think I'd like to see a couple diagrams.
Yeah, that's it. So, the cul-de-sac diagram's already in, in the reg book. What we don't have is just a diagram that just shows the road and the measure and the length, and that's it. And that'll go with that. And then, as far as contained in the actual cul-de-sac, the low maintenance, okay, there's descriptors in that whole section, and...
Cul-de-sac section?
Yes. When it shows how to design the cul-de-sac, in there, there's actually an actual diagram that actually shows the cobblestone and everything else in there.
It's not in there anymore.
I know. I didn't see it. I got that same subdivision rulebook.
It's over there on the wall. We'll have to take a look on the way out of the Planning Board room.
So...
The man behind the curtain.
Wally, you're saying there's a limit on how big that...
It's 125-foot diameter to get public safety trucks out, yeah.
Right.
Minimum paved roadway diameter.
Correct. That's a minimum diameter.
You could have a giant circle down here.
Well, that's what Pheasant Lane did. It didn't have the actual inside.
It's just a giant...
It's just a giant paved area.
Have diameter, diameter circle.
You have to go around.
You take the circumference of that giant area? I mean, so, let's try to keep it simple, stupid, I would say.
Yeah.
Let's not overthink this.
We have that diagram. We'll just take that and tweak the reg. We will find it.
I think Annie's been through every document in that office, and I don't think...
Of every town in Massachusetts.
Right.
So, other towns do have diagrams.
We do. I know we do.
So, only something in there saying, "We measure like this and like that, and this length is..."
That's it, 750.
And this length is...
The diameter, 125. Yeah, that's it. 125-foot diameter is minimum.
That's a minimum, though.
It's a minimum. You can make a 300-foot, or if you wanted, to like John says.
We can amend that to put a maximum, too, right?
Right. You can amend it to a maximum.
Right.
What would be the maximum you'd want to see?
As long as I can get the trucks turned around, I don't care the maximum.
Yeah, it doesn't affect them. If it's bigger, they can drive. But what I'm saying is, like, the bigger it gets, you want to include that length in the roadway length.
That'll be a 50-foot road, and then the rest of it will be a cul-de-sac. I mean, I know, I know.
Okay. So, we can tweak that, and then...
I think it'd be better to just measure the...
All right. Is that it for that?
Thank you.
Yep.
All the way around.
Well, you might be right, unless we have, you know what, a minimum and a maximum.
I don't know. I feel like that's more complicated.
Okay, 931 Salem. You guys want to move to that?
Yeah, I guess so. Are we done with the discussion we were...
Yeah, I'll get some information and pass it on.
John, are we done with...
I don't know.
I think that diagram may have been on the bulletin board there. Take a look.
So, I take it what we're going to do is we're going to table this for now until we get some diagrams, and we get some clarity on a minimum of 125, and we'll do a maximum cul-de-sac with low maintenance and impact for the town.
Well, I wouldn't table it. Just move the discussion.
We're going to move it to...
Yeah, continue.
Should we fly a motion to continue?
Motion to continue the 750-foot road length.
A second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on to 931 Salem Street. Board of Selectmen decision to allow the increase in cars for the sale on the lot, which is not enough parking spaces. Annie, this is yours.
Yes, it is. So, I believe it was at the, I think it was at a meeting in June of the Board of Selectmen, Groveland Gas, or not Groveland Gas, I'm sorry, Groveland Auto requested an increase in their used car sales display from six to 10. And with that, they submitted this diagram that you see here with their parking plan. I highlighted the parking data, because it's just, they summarize it all, and it's easier to look at. There were some errors on it that I did note in the first paragraph of my letter to the Board of Selectmen, but essentially, what it comes down to is that they were short two spaces per zoning, but the Board of Selectmen did grant them.
But would that mean, so the Selectman granted, but would he have to still come back to the zoning board for a waiver for parking spaces? First, might we have to answer that one?
It's planning.
Is it planning or is it zoning for parking?
We were the SVA on that.
Yeah. So, that, yes, that, they are short two spaces, and therefore, they're not compliant with zoning. That was also if we were counting the spaces at the pump, which they were counting. And then, they were all, they had also been counting spaces within the bays. I had a conversation with Sam Jostling, our Building Inspector and Zoning Enforcement Officer. We gave them one space per bay, but in talking with Selectman Naves, he made a good point that this really isn't enforceable. There's no way for us to know if a car sitting there is for sale, or if it's just a car they're working on.
Right. So, just for clarification there. So, looking at the plan...
Yep.
I know it says 10 spaces for a parking used car display, but those are, those are part of the 35 that I count on the lot right now, that are marked parking spots, including the three bays. I know it says five, proposed five bay on the plan, but that I know is noted as three bays, not five.
Yeah.
So, including those spots, that's 35.
Yeah, yes. Sorry, there are a lot of numbers. This took me a long time to put together, I'll be honest. Yeah, so...
He's got a lot going on there.
When Sam and I looked at it from our agreed-upon perspective, there are a total of 35 spaces, not...
And that's not including pumps or drive-throughs, right?
And I don't think you can include spaces in the back.
We included the pumps.
Because it's only 22 feet, and you need about 10.
There are 32 total line spaces, eight pump spaces. Or, sorry, oh, God, so many numbers. So, zoning requires 35 spaces, which does not include the 10 used car display spaces. There are 32 line spaces, eight pump spaces, and we considered three bay spaces, not the 10 that they considered. So, that makes a total of 43 available spaces. That means that it's two spaces short, but that's including the eight pump spaces.
So, since the pumps aren't in...
Yeah. No, they're not.
You know, that gives them a flexibility of six spaces right now.
And does, does the zoning specifically say that these ones on the side here that he's noting for used car display are not to be counted in his available spaces? I mean, because the way I would look at it is that there are spaces in what he uses it for, but those are his spaces.
No, it doesn't call, like, there aren't, the only, like, specific spaces are handicap. Like, is that what you mean? Like...
Right.
I believe there's two out front, handicap, or three.
Yeah, there's, no, but to answer Chris's question, like, we don't specifically call out, like, this space has to be for this, this, and this.
So, he had 35 spaces. He wants to use 10 to show cars, and that's making, that's making him short spaces.
Yes.
And the Selectmen approved it.
Sorry, and the Selectmen did approve it, yeah.
Why don't they refer him back to the Planning Board?
I don't know.
Because look at the plan. If he's, if he's going to park cars all in here, or, you know, proposed, right in the middle there...
Yeah.
How is that going to work traffic-wise?
I don't know, and that's what I said last night.
That's going to be...
Well, the other thing is that the hours of operation on this, it's not a 24/7 operation.
Well, right.
Yeah, so...
Where does the tanker come in to load?
That's good. There's no, the pumps aren't even up yet, so it's...
Well, with all the additional cars, this is what I've always said, it would have to be a night drop, when there is nobody there.
Yeah.
Well, when the pumps are in, a couple of people getting gas, then we have people coming in here, coming in there, going out. There are cars parked here, so they can't get around the cars and...
And I don't really, you know, if you went for a waiver for spaces, I would, you know, we will look at it and maybe grant it or not grant it, but you've got to consider the safety of in and out, and somebody at the gas pumps, somebody going through the drive-through for a cup of coffee, somebody going to the convenience store, somebody going into the, there's a lot of stuff going on there.
Yeah, people coming out of the drive-through, yeah.
How about, how about on a temporary basis? Because for one, the pumps aren't in yet.
No, and I would agree, I would agree with that, and revisit this when the pumps are in, and let's see what it looks like at that point.
And let's see, yeah, that's it. So, go with the Selectmen's, although they kind of jumped the gun on that, but if it's only two additional spaces at the moment, but we can't really get a good look at this.
He doesn't have the pumps, so it doesn't really...
Right, so it doesn't really matter.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah. So, once the pumps are in, we can revisit it and see if maybe he doesn't need the spaces when the pumps are in.
Correct, correct.
So, I look at it as a moot point at the moment, but from the board's perspective, we could, we could make a vote to honor this on a temporary basis until such time that the pumps are going to be constructed and brought in, and then revisit the issue.
With a letter, you know, stating that back to the Selectmen from us.
Yeah.
Would you like just a letter to the Selectmen?
No, you get a copy.
The owner.
Yeah, Fadi on it, too.
John, what do you have?
You know, we'll honor it, but we're going to, it's going to be temporary basis and revisit it when the tanks are in.
For the pumps.
Because he may not need them. You know, there's so many variables between now and then.
Correct.
You can't really judge it until that structure goes up and how that flow may dictate itself.
And the other thing that we would caution, you know, the Selectmen and the owner of the station is, he's going to have construction work there to install. He's going to have an excavation crew.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He's going to have concrete. He's going to have rebar. He's going to have piping guys. He's going to have tank guys, you know. Where's all this stuff going to go? I mean, this is...
Well, it's going to block off half the...
I know.
Well, that'll be part of the building permit for that.
So, you know, that would be a SAM thing to make sure that it's going to be, you know, safe for them to continue construction on that site.
Okay, so did we motion that? You want to vote on it?
Can we do that motion again, because it was...
Kind of loose?
Yep.
So, motion to approve the Selectmen's approval for the two additional spaces on a temporary basis, and the board will revisit it once the pump construction and design has come in.
With a letter to Fadi and the Selectmen.
And the Selectmen.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's that one. All right.
Next up is a correspondent. A letter forwarded by the Selectmen, oh, that's a Planning Board we got again.
The same thing?
No, it's actually different. Jason Naves, our Selectman Naves, happened to get this email while he was in the office with me and said, "Oh, this is a planning board thing. I'll forward it to you, so you can present it to the board." It's just a, would the board like me to read it, or they just want to...
I think we all got it here. Acknowledge it into the record.
Yes.
I acknowledge it and want to know how he knows it's unprofitable by 2035. I mean, if I had a crystal ball and knew that was gonna happen in 2035, I'd be, I wouldn't be sitting here right now. Being a beach in Tahiti somewhere.
I'm sure there's a report somewhere that says that.
In the current...
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a, there's a lot of legislation coming.
It's the shift to electric vehicles.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the shift to electric vehicles, first of all, is a long way out. Number two, I installed these things, so these charging stations.
Oh, the charging stations.
So, so they can be, um, brought in and, and even if, uh, some miracle happened and, you know, we can start fueling our cars with H2O here pretty soon. Which would be wonderful, I suppose. You're still gonna have on the electric cars, locations for them to charge, and those, those would be pumped out.
Transfer them to...
Yeah, so it'd be a transition, although, um...
Yeah.
I don't think we, do we, I, I don't think we actually pay any tax dollars into gas stations. Uh, in the town of Groveland.
I, I was surprised to read that too. I, I wasn't sure, I mean, the only thing I could think of was our, like, highway water light department there vehicles.
Yeah.
That was the only thing I could...
In my, in my 30 years here, I, I've never heard about that.
Paying tax dollars into gas stations?
Well, that's, I mean, those are our tax dollars.
Our tax dollars buying gas stations.
The highway fills up their equipment, when they fill up their trucks, that's our tax, that's tax dollars going into gas stations.
The town can't afford to maintain what we have, so we're gonna restore it.
Talking about remediation of those sites after the fact, I think.
No, and I, and I think obviously, you know, this inherent risk with, with, with any gas station with, you know, the same thing we were talking about earlier with, you know, tanks leaking and going into the water table and what, what have you, right?
Yeah.
It's like double walls and...
That's been going on since Drake.
Well, it's, and obviously, obviously something that we take into account next time someone comes in wanting to put a gas station in town, right?
We've taken into account.
Yeah.
Alright, duly noted. Okay, next up, what do we got?
Reorganization of the board.
Nope, meeting minutes.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes.
Aren't we gonna reorganize the board?
Meeting minutes are first.
Oh, okay. Approval of June 21st, 2022 minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes?
I have.
Has everybody agree with them?
I do.
Yes, indeed.
Alright, do I have a motion to...
No motion.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up, reorganization of the board. So, I guess it's voting time.
It's just that time of year again to reorganize the board. There was nothing specific about it.
Who's, and then that. So, uh, I'll motion Brad for chair and I'll, and I'll take the second seat. As, uh, since I've been here the longest, I guess.
Big reorg.
We used to, we used to have a minutes taker. We, we don't.
Is it reorg or validating the existing?
So, I would like, you know what I'd like to stay on, is chair while 106 King goes on. And this is not a, this took me a long time to learn in reading the subdivision rules and...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Reckon Rebecca and Andy, I mean, there's a time to know. I would like one more year at this, if that would be venerable to you guys.
I know.
I'm in favor.
I threw the motion, yeah. Anybody second that?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
And is he vice chair?
Yeah, and I volunteer for vice, but somebody's gonna motion it.
I appreciate your votes.
Alright, I, I'll make, make a motion for Walter Sorensen, vice chair.
I second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What are the positions we got? Yeah, we don't have RPC anymore. We don't have...
I'm everything else.
You're, you're in.
You're everything.
I do everything else.
We're picking up, picking up everything else.
So, we have a town planner update.
Yes, I accidentally left my note from last meeting to reorganize the board in there, so please disregard that. Couple updates, we had our second comprehensive master plan steering committee meeting last night, and because both John and Chris were there, I'll let them take it away.
Okay, guys. Who would like to, who would like to talk? John, you, I'll be quiet tonight.
Yeah, let's see, the meeting, actually it was pretty good discussion. We went over a little bit, over time. I mean, they, they, the planners walked through results of the workshops, community feedback. We had a chance to discuss a couple of points. I mean, most of it was, you could start to see some pretty common themes coming out. You know, the three areas being Elm Park to Pines, and then Georgetown to Salem Street intersection there, yeah. And then the other one out by 150 Center. So, I think the most debated topic was probably what to do at 150 Center.
Agreed.
So...
Which is the strawberry fields.
Yeah, so what's the, what's, what's the big debate? What do they want?
Well, just, I think the competing interests there of development versus, um, aquifer protection. And the reason why the town acquired the land to begin with was to protect that, so, and maybe there's room for both, but there needs to be some, some assessment to, uh, some further assessment needed there. There was a lot of discussion around Valley Screw. I don't know if you want to go through the details of what's happening there, but...
Just for 150 Center Street, Rebecca and I did apply for a community one-stop grant for site readiness, which is kind of like a... Site readiness isn't really the right, it's more like a feasibility study into it. So, like a market analysis of the site, a, um, environmental impact statement, a traffic study for if something were to go in there, other engineering documents and things like that. So, we did apply for a grant through the state with that. So, hopefully we will be getting that grant and we'll be able to actually provide some more concrete information rather than just talking in, like, dream terms.
There's only so much you can do with that site because it's a bond, right? You need to talk to the bond attorneys, basically what you could...
Well, the initial, the initial plan for that, um, it goes way back, goes back almost 30 years, where we, where the town was gonna take that under eminent domain, because Jim Bussing on it, because it was the sand pits. And, um, and what, what happened on that is that we pitched that so many times to rezone it, okay? And, uh, some of those drawings are still in there, I'm sure. Um, and we pitched it for seven years in the town meeting to rezone that entire area out there.
As what, not residential, right?
That, what's that?
Not residential.
Not, not residential, but...
It's owned industrial right now.
But industrial, but it had, what we were trying to do was like a Brooksby Village overlay. The initial gee whiz plan on that, and the reason why we did this was when we did our max build-out plan. Our max build-out showed that particular area that could have over 1,200 housing units in it. It would double the size of the town at that point. Now, granted, 1,200 may not be actually, how many would go in there, but if you got 900 units in there at five occupants per, you still pretty, that's 4,500 citizens, okay, new to the town. So, that was one of the reasons why we took a look at this back in the, the old master plan, which should be going through in there. And those studies should be in there. So, then we came up with an overlay district. So, initially, one of the things that the town needed at the time was recreational fields, hence strawberry fields, which was, um, a soccer field, okay, going in there. And then a Brooksby Village was gonna go into the center area, okay? And initially, it was a site for the, the school. Was also one of the sites that they were looking at about 25 years ago down in there. So, the overlay district was for senior housing because we needed it. And then the recreational fields are all around, and then it made sense because the seniors could come out, walk through the parks, we had baseball down there, soccer and anything else that we, we had football, et cetera, for the town of Groveland. And it would be nice for the seniors to, to see their children, grandchildren, et cetera, okay, playing in the fields all the way around. And that was the original plan for that, was an overlay district for senior housing. So, and, and that's still a viable plan. It also protected, uh, the aquifer area out there on those wells, uh, which needed quite a bit of space going through. So, that was the original, uh, and we spent a lot of time and a lot of money coming up with some of these designs for that, and I, I think that needs to be tweaked, but it certainly is one of the possibilities for that area, and it can do both.
What was the findings that you guys came up with the meeting and what is kind of developing into like the top three right now?
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot of call from mixed-use areas, a lot of call for stay and, you know, stop and stay areas. They have not want, go there for a single purpose, but go and stay awhile in a certain area to do some certain things, whether it be, you know, um, you know, finding something, like in Fadi's old building up on that corner on, uh, you know, you know, across from Pub 97, that's gonna be, that's something to there to, to, to do, uh, keep people around and actually not, you know, for awhile, make, make something to go in a destination.
A place to get, like, a coffee and then let your kids, like, run around in a green space.
I think we're starving for business in this town for tax bases.
A hundred percent.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's a lot of discussion about that and recognition of that. And actually, I think there was a request to include, like, a, a chapter or a section in the master plan about that.
Because I think Elm Park is all you can do in Elm Park, I mean, unless you start buying houses or letting the people develop the houses into candy shops.
You could allow businesses in those.
Well, there's selling it.
Oh.
It's definitely up, up for the eye.
Yeah. Has it been sold yet?
Yeah.
Has the Stark and Cronk building been sold?
Um, I don't think it's closed.
Oh, cool. So, the, the original downtown plan settled before the bridge, and the bridge was gonna be relocating down School Street and not where it is currently right now. The entire downtown was gonna be blocked off as a pedestrian walkway. The gas station that's remaining there still, the eyes were, okay, that was supposed to be demolished and that was gonna be an on-ramp for the...
A lot of public comments about that.
Yeah, and that was gonna be an on-ramp for the, for the Merrimack River and come into a complete pedestrian downtown area. And that was a viable plan, and we pitched it to the Bridge Committee, you know, way back. And, and it, uh, you know, they trashed it, you know, pretty quickly, but although the planning board spent about seven months coming up with plans, designs and everything for that. But then a couple of years later, some other heads came on and they took a look at it. They called us back in to give a briefing, and by then, the steel had been ordered for the bridge and the Commonwealth wouldn't cancel the bridge back to the original plan. So, that basically killed that downtown pedestrian area plan.
We got the Merrimack River, we got the pines. Should start doing farmers markets and stuff like that down there.
We're working on it.
Yeah, there was, there was some call for that stuff to use, that speaks for some kind of...
We have a list going, we just need to get all the permitting plates.
Or something, you know, like...
Yeah, food trucks and just test the waters and see how that starts. You gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, there's definitely a need, and, and one of the things that you just, just touched on it was that, um, part of that plan that we talked about for the pedestrian downtown area was that as each of those structures became available, they were going to be purchased under grant and turned into like stores, restaurants, et cetera, et cetera, all the way up.
God, I mean, you don't really see much turnover down there.
No, well, at the time, there was. There was, you know, there, there was probably 10 that, that overturned in that area. And then we got the grant for Elm Park itself to redo it back to its historic view that you see today. Uh, and that was a multi-board approach. That was a very good project for this town. And we did it.
Not to interrupt, I noticed that we still have the chief and a lot of super, do you guys have any comments?
Just hanging out.
Just hanging out.
I was gonna mention in my town planner update, and I'll just say it now since Colin's still here, we're gonna do a rain barrel project. It's gonna be a partnership with the Water and Sewer Department and the Economic Development, Planning and Conservation Department.
That's the rain.
Are we raining out right now?
I say, I hope they're out right now, I can catch a little bit.
Well, we need to buy them first.
And what's the rain barrel?
Um, we are going to be purchasing 40 rain barrels for residents to have on a first-come, first-served basis. Part of it's gonna be paid through the Water and Sewer, and part of it's gonna be through an MS4 permit. And I will have more details about that when we figure out the details, but... Cooperation between departments.
Cool.
It's a good idea.
Idea?
Well, Colin's here, he had mentioned it.
I was just talking to a friend at work. He got his, he lives in Newburyport. He got his rain barrels from City of Newburyport. Similar program.
There's, it's a great program. The company that does it makes it so easy for municipalities to do it. They have a partnership with the EP, so it's like, you know, you're getting something good. It's great. So, hopefully we'll be able to do this years to come, but we're gonna see what the demand is gonna be like now, when they're free, and then go from there.
Nice.
Cool. Alright, is that it?
Nope.
Nope.
One thing, Wally, you just need to sign this, it's the yearly signature for the state.
Yep.
Another thing, I was going through all of our requirements with the town clerk as far as making sure we're up to date on all of our stuff, being sworn in and everything. And Wally, we just need you to do ethics.
All done.
Do you have the certification to give the town clerk?
I already gave it to her. Uh, it was emailed today.
So, then we should be all up to date, so everyone else is good. You missed one.
I did.
One on the top two. 154 Center Street, it's what Millennium Plastics is right now, in the process of being sold and bought. And I've been in contact with the potential new owner, and they're probably gonna be filing with us for a site plan approval. So, that's underway. 106 King is making great progress. You may have noticed they've mostly finished the water main.
Yeah, he flew, huh?
Yeah, so all the pipes in, hydrants are in. They just need to, we gotta do the, the testing, the bacteria testing on it and pressure testing it. Quick project.
Who did, who is the sub on that one?
JP Cardillo, I believe it's named. I don't know if the JP part is right, but it's Cardillo.
Yeah. And the rest of it's going well. They've put in, I think, all of their drainage. And then they're gonna be working on water next, so that's going well. And then that's kind of it for our big projects we have going on. 142 King Street, they've done all their tree clearing that they need to, and they've done a okay amount of the grading that they need to do, but they're still working on it. But they...
I saw the little detention basin out to the right, yeah, and they got some rocks around there.
142 King, was that the, it used to be Center Street?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Um, and they have been in touch with the electric department about making sure that they'll be able to put everything underground with them, and they think they'll be able to do it without grading, or sorry, they'll be able to do it without blasting while also meeting our slope requirements.
Yeah, that was a...
That was a...
There was a, we, we saw that in the sidewalk. He was able to do it.
Yeah, so, I think that's it.
Fit, fit? So, we can fly a motion?
Sure.
Yep, motion adjourned.
Seconded.